Alright, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, February twenty fifth. Like to call the meeting to order. Uh, the clerk will do roll call. Commissioner Quinn, present. Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
And we have, um, the invocation, please stand for the invocation by Mr. Colm O'Callaghan this morning.
Thank you.
Just before I pray, I want to share a scripture from Psalm, one that I think is scripture of encouragement, Psalm forty six. In the sixth verse and following, it is written, "The nations rage, the kingdoms tarture; he utters his voice, the earth melts. The Lord of hosts is with us, the God of Jacob is our fortress. Come, behold the works of the Lord; now he has brought desolations on the earth. He makes the wars cease to the ends of the earth; he breaks the bow and shatters the spear, he burns the chariots with fire. Be still, and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations; I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us, the God of Jacob is our fortress." I'm in prayer. Father, thank you that you are present and mindful of us. I pray, Father, that as the commissioners meet and discuss the affairs of our county today, that you will be guiding them, encouraging them. We pray that your protection will continually be around us in everything that we do. And I pray, Father, that we will seek to do good for one another, that we will seek to do good for all of our community. That we will glorify you in making right and strong decisions. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, um, the Carson's public comment? Do we have a public comment? Public comment? Here, come on up here. Um, and then I just have, um, a little blurb to read. Persons who wish to address the commission regarding items that are not on the agenda may do so at this time, once called upon by the commissioner chair, which, thank you for coming. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should give their name and address when addressing the commission. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. Direction will be given concluding the public comment if further discussion and action is needed. So, come on up, sit down. Thank you for.
Brian Besser, thirteen, three fifty-four, two hundred and forty-second Road, Cummings, Kansas. Here today. Asking about the quarter cent sales tax for the ball fields. Like to see some clear direction and some numbers, understand that this, this, uh, program is ending soon and, um, I'm really just kinda interested in the county's position on it, um, and details, would like to be invited into the meeting with the school board if possible. Considered. Other than that, I'm just here to, to observe and to, um, give some insight as a community member, um, from the community. I was able to sit in on the board, uh, that meeting, um, two years ago at Memorial Hall, in which I believe Eric and Casey was part of. And so I know a little bit of background about it. Just like to be a, a voice if the, if the commissioners need such a thing, uh, from the community, so.
Awesome. Yeah, we very much appreciate it. Um, I know you had reached out to me and I, I gave you Commissioner Noel's number. So if you reached out to him, um, I think our conversation was great and I have, um, addition, gathered additional information, um, that I can share, um, during the sports complex discussion, just to kind of answer some of those questions and just kind of give a, an overall outlook, um, of.
I'm not sure if this is on the agenda today, but I'm bringing it up. Uh, I know the school board's gonna meet today. But it seems to me there's some, some uncertainty as to what the county should do to the Atchison facility, uh, hand it over to somebody else, keep it, or do something different with it. And so I do have an opinion on that, um, and would like to possibly present that at some point.
Well, this is definitely, um, a very thorough conversation that needs to be had. Um, no decisions will be made today. Today on the agenda, we're getting an update, so, um, just to give you a little, December of twenty twenty-two, we allocated four hundred thousand dollars to, um, Atchison Sports Complex and a hundred to Effingham. And we were just asking them to kind of come give us like a recap of where they are on those projects. Um, and then we have just our normal, um, third supplemental bond and denture, uh, scheduled today. But to your point and all the questions you had this, this weekend as well, this needs to be a larger discussion. We have others that wanna meet with us and just really dig in because December of twenty twenty-seven is what the current date is. And so having a plan in, in place by then, cause some of the plans, planning that should have been done on the front end for what it looks like at the end, um, had, yeah, it wasn't done. So, um, that leaves us all in, I mean, kind of a better place though, like two thousand and seven was a long time ago and sure, things are different. So having those conversations now, I think will be, uh, will be helpful and, and good, so.
And that's why I'm here too, is to help continue the conversation. Um, I, I was present a couple of years ago because my kids played ball on those fields and, and have afforded a wonderful opportunity. Um, I think it's a great, um, asset to the community, um, and the county as well. I really would not like to see it be misused or, or given away to someone who's maybe not within the community. If, if that's a, maybe the county can retain ownership of some of it, but, um, those are all questions I have, I guess. Not to, to be discussed really in depth here, but, but that's why I'm here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, approval of the agenda. Um, the only adjustment here is we will, um, we're going to remove the twenty twenty-six budget department benefits, um, under unfinished business for this week. And that should do it. With that adjustment, do I have a motion to approve this week's agenda? Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay. Consent agenda, um, we had the commission meeting minutes that we have received and reviewed. Um, the finance director is going to give us an update, um, on the payroll credit card extension here, and then I will call for a motion.
Okay, so, um, last week we went here from the snow day, uh, but we did have accounts payable that would have went out that day. So, um, it's waiting to go out till you guys approve, um, today. Uh, so out of that, check run for two nineteen, the total was thirty-two thousand, six sixty twenty. And out of that number, credit cards was four thousand, seven sixty forty-one.
Give that again to place four thousand?
Yeah, four thousand, seven hundred, sixty dollars and forty-one cents. And then I kind of broke it down for you guys in the email about the different departments, um, supplies and just other, other department items. There was no payroll that week. Um, for this week, however, there is payroll, um, for Friday, it's two hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. And that's the normal payroll that runs about that, um, every two weeks. The AP expenses, um, for this Wednesday, it's seventy-eight thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty-six cents. And out of that total, eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents is credit card, which has your different department breakdowns. Um, there were some charges that seemed a little off, but after looking into them, it's a normal thing. So once I found out what it was used for, it cleared out the question, so.
Thank you for diving into those.
I don't really see any true problem with them.
Alright, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Next is commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell?
I attended my first EDAG meeting that went well. Also the safety meeting here that went well, and I'm looking forward to a couple of meetings tomorrow, um, county. Well, the, uh, now, I'll get back to you.
Okay, Commissioner Noel?
I have a project concern meeting tomorrow at noon, and then I want to remind the public that the soil conservation meeting is Friday night, it's been changed again, uh, this Friday night at six P M, the commentary at, uh, through seventy-seven.
So our, our twenty twenty-five Atchison County Cleanup Day has, um, or Weekend, has been posted on our social media, um, and website. This year, the dates are Friday, April twenty-fifth and Saturday, April twenty-sixth. Um, it'll be from eight to four, and we just encourage everyone, um, hopefully our schools will get, um, involved again. We've had great community support in the past and just everybody get out and, uh, make Atchison County a better place by picking up, uh, debris and, and utilizing our facilities, so.
Question?
Yes.
Eight to four both days?
Yes.
Okay, cause I didn't think Saturdays it ran that late.
They created the flyer and eight to fours.
Okay.
Yep, they, they planned it, so. And that'll be the Atchison site and Effingham site, so.
The two meetings that I have, uh, tomorrow, emergency planning committee and community corrections.
Okay, perfect.
Looking forward to that.
And although this week we've kind of forgotten about it, I don't know if we've forgotten about it, but we're definitely enjoying the warm weather. I still wanted to just say thank you to our road and bridge crews, um, for the great job that they did, um, throughout the past snowstorm, the past few weeks. Um, also, the commission has updated their winter weather policy. And I just wanna say, as the chair who has to, uh, make the call in conjunction with our emergency management director, um, his communication and diligence of watching that storm come in was top notch. I know people don't see that on the back end because I, they just get an email from me, one way or another, but, I mean, from his determination at eight P M versus when the storm turned at eleven fifteen, I mean, he's on it. And it was just, it was incredible from, from my end, having that one point of contact and being able to rely on someone that's, that's in the know and watching all the things. So thank you to, uh, Mr. Stewart for, for the great job on that. Um, no presentation of petitions or proclamations today, but we do have some unfinished business. So we have the Northeast Kansas Health Board, uh, multi-county, Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department Board. We were seeking applicants, we needed a consumer of medical services and then a medical provider. And we did receive two submissions, so I'd like to read those and then, um, ask for a motion to approve. So this one, and it's coming to the county clerk. So Susan, I am writing to express my interest in being considered to serve on the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department Advisory Board. I am a family physician practicing at Amberwell Atchison. I serve part-time as the chief medical officer there and live in the Atchison community. I would love to be able to serve in this capacity to continue my personal mission to make a positive difference in the health of my community. Thank you for your consideration of me being able to fulfill this important role for our county, Norma Green, uh, Dr. Norma Green. So I would look for a motion to approve Dr. Green to serve on this board.
So moved. And what position?
Uh, the medical.
The medical.
Yeah, provider.
A second, just.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passing three to zero. Um, the next is Commissioners of Atchison County and Northeast County Multi-County Health Department Board of Directors. I am writing to express my interest in serving on the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department Board of Directors. With extensive experience leading healthcare organizations in Northeast Kansas, I believe my background aligns well with the mission and responsibilities of the board. As the former CEO of Always Community Health Center, formerly Atchison Community Health Clinic, a federally qualified health center, I helped oversee the delivery of primary care, behavioral health, and dental services to understand populations in our communities. Additionally, as the current CEO of the Guidance Center, a certified community behavioral health clinic, I lead efforts to provide essential behavioral health services across Atchison, Leavenworth, and Jefferson Counties. These roles have allowed me to develop strong working relationships with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. Beyond operational and fiscal leadership, I have extensive experience ensuring compliance with state and federal programs and grants, engaging in legislative advocacy, and fostering collaboration amongst healthcare providers to address social determinants of health in our communities. As evidenced by my professional experience, I am committed to strengthening public health initiatives. I believe my experience and knowledge can contribute to the board's work in advancing health outcomes for the region. I appreciate your consideration and would welcome the opportunity to further discuss how I can support the board's efforts. Stevie Durkin, L S C S W, um, not sure, not sure what that is, but he's got a license of some type, so. I would look for a motion to approve C V Durkin to the Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health Board. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, next is the county lake one pager. Mark had put together, um, kind of a rough draft, just going off of our preliminary discussions of a one pager for the county lake and didn't know if we wanna offer any feedback on that, if you guys had an opportunity to look at it. I'm trying to pull it up really quick here.
Wasn't entirely sure that how you guys wanted to progress with it or what information you wanted on it. I just put some stuff out there and.
So, my thoughts, I'll share. I like, okay. Uh, yeah, let me look, I just opened it. With two weeks of snow here, it was two thirteen, so February thirteenth at four thirty-seven, I can print a copy if you guys wanna look at it and we can make some notes.
Maybe write on it.
Yeah.
Might be best.
Okay. I'm gonna print it in black and white though, so I don't drain the green.
Yeah, it's, like I said, you might not like the photos or, or.
No, I think the green is great and it shows the boundaries and all the information, um, as far as the layout of it. I think having, well, let me just print, do you guys want me to print, copy, we look at it, make notes?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
That's what I have.
Okay. If it starts coming out. Um, so I like the fact that it talks about for sale, it grabs the attention, right? Atchison County Lake property. Um, the Atchison County Board of Commissioners are reviewing options into selling the county lake property. It is important to put notice out for citizens and the public, public comment can be heard. Okay, I like that. Now these budget, the ad valorem.
That's just what we spent, so anyone can see how much the county has.
Spent, that's our budget expenditures. Okay, so when we get Holly to give us what the forecasted ad valorem tax receipt would be of having it on the tax roll instead of exempt. I think that would be important for the public to see that as well.
I don't know why mine's all, I mean, mine's all leveled up up here, I can't see this.
Here, double click, uh, attention.
Okay, I never, I couldn't figure it out, I didn't get that.
Okay, so ad valorem taxes going to the county lake.
We think reword, not verbiage, can.
Um, in some of the conversations, I think, yeah, even if we just say county expenditures or something for the public to just know, hey, this is what we're spending on it. And then when Holly gives us what it would be if it was on the tax roll and not exempt. Um, and then also I think it's important for us to know, thank you, what the here, let me make these notes.
So, is that?
Want them to make the notes?
Sure.
Is that, would you say the ad valorem, that's just what we're paying, uh, for mowing and that?
Yes, it's their entire budget, whether that's mowing or supplies or.
Is there, is there costs like insurance and things like that that's not into that? I mean, I mean, that would be something else.
Yeah.
I don't know what that would be, but that could be something that's, okay.
And then once we have, um, kind of what the list price looks like, and then, I mean, I think that's important to tell people also, when you sell this, what is your plan with these capital? You know, and, and to know that and to be able to, to explain that to the, to the public, because when we have the capital bank from Senior Village, that we've been discussing, putting that into a road and bridge facility, capital sale, capital improvement, then if there's a shortfall in that one point two nine nine, then is this point of you, you made up for it? And then you know, what's left? Because the public feedback I've gotten, when it comes to selling capital, you need to keep that and put it back into capital, right? So even though I would love to see infrastructure improvements, right? Maybe this is that, getting us to that reserve that we don't have for capital improvements in the future. For when Brian comes in and says, hey, this wall's, you know, coming in, we're not budgeted for it, what are we gonna do? Like that, that gives us, and again, I'm just throwing out ideas, this needs to be, you know, we need to tie them to it and, and get a plan so that the public knows, like, okay, what are you gonna do with this?
Well, well, we, also something that could be put on here is if it was back in, uh, not under the county, how much would it be bringing in as far as property tax? That'd be another, uh, like, it, but now is from this much out, now it's gonna be bringing this much in. And that would have to be, cause we don't know what the potential is of what it would actually be if, if somebody would develop it, it could be even more.
Holly was gonna give us projections on, I believe she said, I don't remember what classification. Probably whatever she has it classified as right now, cause even exempt properties are still classified the same. Um, so she would give us those projections, which, again, that was one of the questions I got when Senior Village is like, how much are you making on that now with property tax? And it's upward, what, twenty-eight thousand some dollars? And to know that the reasoning behind this, right, is when we look at Atchison County as a whole and how much property is exempt and not generating taxes? And the fact that, I mean, the public, I appreciate them calling me on this, and most of them that are even like, why are you doing that? Admit that it's nostalgia that they have, like they love, they grew up there, right? They, they did all the things, but they understand the challenges that we face today and the fact that it's exempt, it's tilted in, all the things that we can't prioritize ever making it what it should be, right? Like.
Well, what you're basically dancing around is we have a revenue that we need to do, we need to do to raise revenue. This is one of those, this is one of those transitions. So you sell this property and it brings in revenue for the county. So if, you know, and then it doesn't cost taxpayers money, it doesn't increase property taxes, and it helps the county, it brings in revenue for the county. And so you know, we're, we're, we're not just a taxing entity here as far as, you know, we, we, we go back to the same uh, homeowners, every year we ask them for more money or whenever we need it. But these kind of projects, this is bringing in and, uh, new revenue, which is a good thing.
I just think explaining that they're not gonna see a decrease in their property taxes, cause we're selling the county lake, right? Like, that's, we're gonna be able to maybe finish the road and bridge facility and then be able to, you know, we're thinking long-term for the county and like what it looks like, um, I just. But does that give you kind of some more ideas of?
No, I'll retweet those.
Yeah, but no, that rough draft, I really love the math and the fact that it says for sale in red and kind of catches the, the attention of the public and and I, maybe we wanna circulate it with the public here for ideas, you know, later, if, if they have it. Um, okay, so next, tax parcels to the city land bank. Pat, did you wanna give an update on the tax sales?
Yeah. Our publication notice had a, uh, a deadline of February fourteenth for, um, people being served by, uh, by publication to file responses, and as usual, no one filed any, that's typically, uh, which is typical, I don't know if we've ever had anybody respond to that. Um, I do not have back yet from the Globe, the affidavit of publication. And there's that and two other things that I'm waiting on before judgment would be complete. And, uh, those others are, I've talked to, I've talked to owners who have not been served and told me they want property in the, the sale, that's listed. Well, owners that own property that should be in the sale, but they haven't been served. But two of them told me they want their property to be included. I need to get that signed by them before judgment, which I anticipate take place this week. We're, we're only going to have, it looks like maybe, uh, maybe twenty parcels that are going to be in the sale, maybe less than that. And, and that's, uh, I, I think we've done a really good job of uh, not letting taxes get to be ten years to follow the sales and it. Um, among all counties, I, I'm confident we're in the top ten percent in counties of our size where we, we've gotta be, uh, the tops are right near the top of, uh, having tax sales. So I've talked to several county counselors and counties our size and smaller that maybe haven't had a sale in a decade or longer, so, anyway, um, I anticipate that we would have judgment by the end of, uh, by, by the end of February, actually maybe even by the end of, yeah, by the end of February, be the end of this week. Um, and then we put the sale, uh, the end of March or the beginning of April.
Okay, so hopefully maybe by next Tuesday, we'd have a firm date or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. So we will add that. And then on the city parcels, so we've had the parcels and Atchison Board of County Commissioners names for a year or two, and Mark reached out to the city manager and they're interested in them for the land bank. Are you, what is the process of that? Because you had mentioned putting them back on the tax sale one last time? Or, cause they're in our name?
Yeah, okay, that, that's only, uh, three or four parcels, it's not very many. Uh, i- if they're willing to accept them, it just takes a deed from, from you. Of, uh, a motion, I guess, and a vote to approve that. Uh, they can be offered for sale, they don't necessarily at this point have to go on a tax sale, they can be offered for, uh, Uh, they can be offered for sale. They don't necessarily at this point have to go on a tax sale. They can be offered for uh. For people to make uh. Proposals to you. For them, that is, you you could you you could take private bids or seal bids for them, or you could accept proposals. Um, of what people might plan to do with those parcels. Uh, or you could. Uh, put them on another tax sale.
And these are historic tax sales that didn't sell. They got put in the board of county commissioners name.
This is just from the last tax sale. Before that, we used to vacate the judgment for the properties that didn't sell and those properties would go back on the next tax sale. And. Uh, about half of the properties that are in our current tax sale are those properties that didn't sell with a prior sale.
I think it's probably in the best interest of the county to come up with a policy. Of when they don't sell instead of keeping them in the board's name where they're exempt and not generating anything, the city's already. Has the model, right? They have the land bank, they're. Aggressively dispersing out of their land bank for new development around the community, so. I think it's in everybody's best interest to get those babies. Back on the tax roll and if they didn't sell in the tax sale and the city wants them for the land bank. And they're in the city of Atchison.
Does the land bank pay taxes on those properties? But they. They don't pay taxes on them. The taxes are still assessed. Uh, and then when they get rid of the property, they can determine whether or not to cancel the taxes or to have them paid. So, but typically they're not paid. Um, while they are in the land bank. But that changes my.
Oh, yeah.
But I just wanted to. Uh, because I didn't think that they actually paid taxes on those properties and.
And also remembering we had gotten weed ordinances because they're in our name and we're not maintaining them, so. It's just, I feel like it's in everybody's best interest. The city's turning and burning them. You see new development. Let's let's keep on the, let's push together to get more properties that aren't tax exempt.
Yeah, unless unless there's a better idea. I agree, I agree. The city is developing these properties left and right and that's that generates. Income revenue, so I agree.
And so on those, if he's willing to do it, if you could just get with Pat and get those deeds for our next meeting and. We'll get those done. Thank you. Okay, next we have Cynthia Reeve. Uh, Northeast Kansas Environmental Services Presentation of Annual Report. I see Martha instead of Cynthia Reeve.
Yes, sorry, she's the office manager. She's the one that sent the communication out, so. The presentation I'll give everybody a copy of our. Tooties, I'm here for annual.
Thank you.
Report to everybody. Good morning, by the way, to everybody.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody. I'm Martha, I'm the.
Hi.
I'm now the director of Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. I've had a title change, but my jobs, job duties are more or less staying the same, so. Um. We do this annual report to to the commissioners to let us know since since we receive. Uh, funding from the county to be part of the environmental coalition, so. Um. This is just a kind of a quick synopsis of our twenty twenty four activities for Atchison County. Uh, starting at the very top, we had eighteen new wastewater permit applications, which was up three from twenty twenty three. Most of those are for new homes, for new wastewater systems for those new homes. There are a handful couple that uh are for failing wastewater systems that are being fixed up that we also permit. We completed twenty one wastewater system permits in twenty twenty four. That means we issued final use permits to those property owners. The lagoons got fenced, the septic systems got installed in a drawing in our office, so everything was completed. Properly, and so we completed twenty one of those in twenty four. And that's not only for permits that we permit applications from twenty twenty four, but previous years prior to twenty twenty four as well. Uh, property resale evaluations, that's where. Property owners or realtors call us up, they're selling the property and they need us to come in and check the wastewater system. We performed ten of those in twenty twenty four, which was up three from twenty twenty three. Uh, private well screens, that's where we go check the waste wa- the the well, the private drinking well on a property. Get a water sample, check it to make sure it meets the safe drinking water standards. We performed three of those in twenty twenty four, which was up a couple from twenty twenty three. And then we performed three consultations, which was down one from twenty twenty three. A consultation. Property owner may own a property and they're thinking about building and they want to make sure that a wastewater system can go on there. Or um, you know, we've got. Um. We've got eighty acres and we're thinking about, you know, having a smaller section surveyed off. Come help us just determine the best place for that, that home to make sure that a wastewater system will work there, so. That was the consultations. Um, nuisance and other activities, um, the first one was a complaint received in our office. Of wastewater overflowing onto the ground out of a lagoon. That is a work in progress. Uh, we're working with the property owner and the installer to get that. They're they're gonna have to build a new lagoon. I mean, that lagoon is brim full. When it was built, it was not built big enough. And it doesn't have a fence around it and it's right up next to the road, so they are going to build a second cell. To where it'll overflow into that second cell and then they will properly fence it all the way around. The next one, two, three, four. Complaints were added to my list of the list of nuisance complaints that we've been working on for the last. Few years. Um, I have checked on all of those. Um. I'm not sure, I, to be honest with you, I've not been back by since I checked him last. Think I. According to my list, I think I was there in June. Um. Yes, mid-June, I I checked on all of those. Um. Just typical nuisance properties in the county. Um, then the next one, the. Sept, we had a complaint that a septic tank was uncovered and overflowing onto the ground. We actually got that one fixed up. They put in a new wastewater system for that. It's all covered up. It's all completely permitted properly. And we're back in good business for that one there, so that was a good success story. Any questions on all any of those nuisance properties or? Um, any of those things that we've been addressing? So far on the list.
What was done on? The Dublin Drive. Turned one down.
That one is. I don't, typically I send a letter, but I, if I remember right, I looked at these this morning and I don't think I sent a letter out. I I checked the property and then I made a communication email to Mr. Henderson, Ms. Quinn. Um, to check to see, you know, what the next step is, you know, with with not only these, but any of them on the list, what the next step is. And I'll be honest with you. I never got back and, you know, followed up with them. I'm not sure that we.
And not, you know, about.
I don't remember.
The Bellevue that he's referring to.
Yeah, I think we got, uh, the commissioners got a a feedback on that as well. Recently, or let me look.
So you're kind of waiting on that.
I don't, that was the address. I think it's been quite a while ago. Probably August, September, maybe. Timeframe, but I don't remember if that was.
It's October twenty ninth.
October.
Um. And it's a different, it's a different. It's a. Wow, that's interesting. It's just a few. It's Bellevue Drive, but a different.
Different property.
Oh.
Wonder if they just.
Nope, that's the same property, sorry. The complaints down below, they gave their address, which is a couple. Oh, yeah. All for the state commissioners too. Because Mr. Campbell wouldn't have gotten this.
Just to bring you up to speed, we've been working on a list of complaints for the last. Oh, I think this is dated twenty nineteen. And. That was kind of when the formal progress was made, you know, putting them all together and, you know, making. We've had complaints on different properties throughout Atchison County. I've been with any KES for ten years. And it's been pretty much going on the whole ten years. We send letters to them, try and get them to get the properties cleaned up. Some of them will, some of them won't. And uh, we're working, you know, with the county counselor and, you know, you guys to make sure they're working. Doing our best to get them cleaned up, knowing that there's a handful that probably won't ever get cleaned up. So.
I want to go back real quickly to the consultations and this morning we were um. In workshop, we were told about a property near. Hemet. And that you discovered was uh, doesn't have a septic system and it's in a floodplain. And that the topic was, I think our questions were is like, when someone's buying a piece of property. And uh. They intend to build a house or put a house on it and will need various things as a sub- septic system and everything. Do they need to contact you for a consultation on property they maybe don't own yet? How how could that work where? Because when someone potentially wants to build. Can your office supply the? The consultation that they would need to get. Uh, at least a good idea that it would suffice not be in a floodplain or uh. Be big enough or where that would be, um, because that's, that was the question this morning is how would someone know? On a property they're not familiar with, they want to purchase it, the county, we don't have zoning, so.
Right.
How does, how would that work?
We would provide that service, you know, I've got, I don't have the in-depth floodplain knowledge and. Um, insight that your floodplain manager has, but I, everybody's got a. A access to the floodplain, the FEMA flood floodplain maps, and that's simply all I would do.
And and he's he showed up here, uh. It it's not just the floodplain, but then even if maybe the property would be big enough for this system that. Because it's a very small property and things like that, so, you know, that would be something. To be beyond the floodplain. I mean, I wasn't trying to just say that only.
Absolutely, and and honestly, we do take those phone calls on the regular. You know, people call us up and say, hey, this property is for sale, we'll pull it up and, you know, in the GIS it'll say, you know, one point five acres. This one in particular, and I can't remember what road it is, it's just south of town here. There's a house, an empty lot and another house. And I just tell, you know, do a kind of a verbal consultation on the phone. There's a house on either side of this property. It's a very small lot, you're gonna need, you know, probably a little more sophisticated septic system if you end up building on this lot. Um. And, you know, just kind of guide them in that way. If they want to meet us, I'm more than happy to meet them there and kind of go through the same thing, but. A lot of times, there's those questions for potential buyers can be addressed over the phone.
Okay, because it's very hard, especially on a small lot, to envision what it's gonna take. The size wise, even with the type of ground it is, the how close to the creek.
Right.
These things, so um, I just kind of. More or less for public viewing here that this you you would be a good. Source. For them to have a consultation before they buy.
Absolutely.
Buy. Then you're up a.
Right. Absolutely.
Well, and I think to Eric's point, from a constituent standpoint, it's harder to wrap your. Brain around why you're being told, no, I can't do this on this property that has had trailer houses on it. And even in our notes in the county, it shows we went out and measured it, took pictures of it, you know, we've definitely been assessing it. But now we're saying, oh, you can't, you can't do that anymore because. I mean. There's been trailers there in the past, so there had to be some wastewater system um, or. Some illegal activity if it's not a wastewater system, right?
Right.
And so. For some, for an everyday constituent that's just buying a property with a trailer and gonna put a trailer there, it's just. It's harder to. To understand, right?
Right. Now, that particular property, I will say that. We, as Northeast Kansas Environmental Services, permitted a wastewater system. Back in the day.
Okay.
Because it was considered out of the floodplain. Now with the updated technology with LIDAR and everything. That property is con- is completely in the floodplain, so.
On the map or is it physically flooding?
I can't tell you that it's physically flooded ever. Um, all I know is I, I was on my way to another property. And there was a a a car there, so I stopped because, you know, been there long enough. I know that it's kind of on the radar. And I stopped and visited with the gentleman who indicated he was the owner and he had indicated to me that. Um. He wasn't aware of any of the extra things that, you know, the floodplain and all of that stuff. I said, well, I'm pretty sure we had permitted a wastewater system back in the day. And he said, and I mentioned about the floodplain and he says, well, I know the banks are eroding away. Now, I don't know. To what degree, whether it's risen over onto the ground, I don't know.
No, that's, that's important to know that there had been a licensed wastewater.
Yes.
System because that that was the part I was like, how do you not? You know, when you had a trailer there.
Right, the property owner, and don't quote me on this, but it was like oh six or something like that. We had records of. You know, our due diligence checking floodplain maps at that time and indicated that it. Where the wastewater system is at that time was out of the flood floodplain. And so now with all the LIDAR and everything, all of that has changed.
Okay.
So.
We know if the previous owner would have. Been. The the previous owners of this person. Would have been aware of the new floodplain.
I don't know that. I don't know if it was a private sale, went through Realtor. I think that makes a difference as well, you know, because if I'm selling a property to Mr. Noel. And I don't have a Realtor involved. There's a lot more due diligence done when a Realtor is involved versus, you know, I'm just selling it to you for cash price. So, I don't know.
More specifically, my question is, could we go back and look at the previous owner and? Be with you and see if that person had been notified. Because if if that person had been notified of this new. Floodplain area and then they sold the property. Potentially. You know, that it wasn't kept from this. This new tenant, rather than the new owner, it was just, they just weren't aware. You see what I'm.
You're right.
I'm saying the previous owner. If they weren't aware of this new. Outline flooded. Here, because you said that happened when? When did the new? Information come out?
We permitted it in oh six and the li- the new LIDAR came in. Within the last five, six, eight, ten years, I honestly don't know when when the floodplain maps were officially updated.
Well, that'd be, I'd be interested to know if that that the previous owner. Was ever aware.
Yeah, and I don't know how often it it has changed hands since two thousand six, you know, I don't know whose records. Who would have that record as far as. Property owner A owned it in two thousand six, sold it to B, they owned it for two years, turned, you know, so. I don't know how many times it's turned over or anything since then, so. I really. We're not privy to those, that type of record keeping, but. You know, we did have records in our system where. You know, we spoke at the time and, you know, checked with floodplain maps and it was okay to put a septic system there in oh six or whenever the year was.
Um, I have a question about that. So what happens if the floodplain ma- maps do change and cover? People with lagoons and people with. With already septics, is it just considered, oh, it's grandfathered, it's okay?
That would be a question for the county counselor. I think they're possibly working on that. I I know there was a letter in the works to this property owner, but I don't know. What the, I've not heard what the, how that's working out.
This is not a situation where it's been permitted and not, is my understanding. And and this is new information that you've said to me today. I have not checked this, but it's hard for me to imagine that this property would not have been in the floodplain. On earlier maps because it's right next to the creek, I mean, it's.
Yeah, but it can be the same situation that the entire. It's just interesting, right? You're holding a whole floodplain and then you're out.
If I remember right, the edge of this property. Must have been uphill enough that that's where they put the wastewater system. And so I don't know. With all the LIDAR and all the technology in place nowadays, I don't know what they were looking at back in oh six, but we do have documentation that said. Floodplain maps were. Were accessed and it appears as though the floodplain at that time didn't reach all the way to the edge of this particular property. To answer your question. This is the only one that I know of that's really been in question, to be honest with you. So I don't know what the right answer is and. I mean, because there's.
It's just by the map, like all of these are in the floodplain, so I'm just curious, like, what does that look like? Or they're just grandfathered or?
Well, it's. Can I, can I offer a an answer to that?
True.
If the floodplain has changed and they are now in the floodplain, but they weren't previously in the floodplain. They are still allowed to purchase flood insurance. For their use. For that continued use. Uh, within that floodplain, okay? Now, they may have to pay a premium price. But because the building already existed. And was non-conforming at that time, it can continue to exist and get. Uh, flood insurance issued to it. In this case, the building has been removed, so. It wouldn't be allowed to be replaced.
From an environmental standpoint, though, if it's a lagoon or a septic. And it's in a floodplain, how does that?
That's a question for Martha.
Right, I would have to consult with somebody with a higher pay grade than myself, to be honest with you, because I don't know. You know, in this situation, you know, because I would assume that septic tank is now. You know, in this situation, you know, cuz I would assume that septic tank is now in the floodplain. And that is definitely something you don't want in a floodplain due to it potentially floating out of the ground and. And polluting the water, the floodwater, when, if that would ever occur. So, I would need to check on that.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions for?
I don't. I was going to say that when we're making a decision about whether to grant a permit, so is your patient permit? Put that location permit or whatever, we're going to deal with whatever the current maps are. And so, the, the question about whether. Whether a property is grandfathered, as you, you say, really doesn't come up unless we're trying to kick somebody out. And we're not doing that. We're, we're. Really just deciding whether or not to grant or to allow something.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just, from a constituent standpoint, right? If, if you and I are neighbors and I haven't built mine yet, but you've built yours and we're both in the floodplain, but you're saying, no. You, I can't build because you're in the floodplain, but I'm living that, like I have property next to someone in a floodplain that's already. Has it. I'm just trying to understand from an environmental standpoint what the difference is.
The way our, the way the state regulation is, is no part of the wastewater system can be in a floodplain. The lagoon, the septic tank. We do allow the laterals to be in a floodplain, but it's the tank that itself that we don't allow to be inside that floodplain. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, I'm continuing to, you know, kind of update the, the nuisance list. I drove by a handful of them on the list this morning. They haven't changed. Um, we are working on updating county codes. Um, at our last board meeting, it was discussed to, um, for all five of the counties that we cover. To have as similar as possible co- county environmental and sanitation codes as possible. Excuse me. The state of Kansas, KDHE, has come up with what they're calling the model code, where counties can use that to update their environmental and sanitation codes. I've done some, we've done some work, um, for the last few years on an, on updating the Atchison County. Codes specifically. I have read through. A little over half of that model code and it's right in line with what we're, the work we've already done on Atchison County codes. So. I'm gonna use that to enhance the Atchison County code as well as model the rest of the county codes after that model code. Any questions on the count sanitation codes? Okay, um, we license the wastewater installers and haulers and then. We just updated our website here in the last year, so if you haven't been on our website, it's got all kinds of good information regarding. Regulations and counties, county codes, and if you live in Atchison County, what do you need to do if you want to build a house? You know, some of the listing things to, to go through, what you need to do, um, as well as the other counties, so. At our Facebook page, we have good information on there as well. Any questions for you guys?
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you guys, you guys have done your, uh, county contributions in the past, the ten thousand dollars. We will be sending those letters out to be put on to your twenty twenty-six budget. Um, we discussed at the last meeting potentially raising that, this ten thousand dollar, uh. Coalition fee, more or less, um, has been in place since it started back in oh three, oh four, something like that. So we are kind of discussing po- potentially down the road, raising that up a little bit, but once the board gets to that point, then we'll come to all the counties and. Make a discussion at that time, but.
That's board your serving, so you would know ahead of time.
Yes, yeah. So there was some discussion at the last meeting about doing that. Nothing was decided, so. Um, for now, we're gonna stick with the ten thousand dollars until our board makes, you know, any sort of moving step forward on, on changing that. So, thank you for your support in the past. I do have business card. Mr. Campbell, I'll go ahead and give you a business card. Do you guys need? Cards, you've got my contact information. Reach out if you guys have questions or concerns of any sort that we can help you with.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
All right, next we have Drew Garkowski, uh, Midwest Land Group. Um, thank you for coming back.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you for having me.
We had the opportunity to visit a little bit more, um, and to kind of, um. Do one last swoop to, to make sure we didn't miss anyone interested in working with us.
Absolutely.
Wanted to just, uh, get with you to kind of dial in on some. Deeper discussions of what it looks like, um, if we would entertain, you know, selling the county lake. In your first presentation, um, you gave us like an estimated value of like one point six is what you were thinking. Uh, we're all aware that the real estate market changes, um, so just kind of wanna. Understand what the timeline looks like. We're working on putting together a one pager. To get information out to the public of like the mindset of why we're here, um. So, didn't know kind of what you had this go around, um, if we're talking about any like negotiations. Um, that should probably be an executive session with attorney-client, um, but as far as everything else should be open for the public, so.
Yep, absolutely. Now, first and foremost, thank you guys for having me back here. I appreciate it. Back in the hot seat, right? Um, nothing like talking about floodplains and, and laterals and all that stuff before noon, right? Um, so diving into it here, I guess the first question I have for you guys is what's, what's, what's gonna be the biggest hurdle with this process? Um, is it gonna be public perception? Is it gonna be making sure that? Yeah, I mean, is, is the primary goal to sell it for the absolute most and net the most you guys can? What's? What's the biggest goals and what's the biggest hurdles in the whole process?
So, my goal would be the highest pro.
Highest profit net that you can get.
But ensuring that we are selling to someone that's going to be paying taxes. Not a nonprofit, because that's what we're sitting on now, right?
Correct.
Two hundred plus acres of exempt property. And when we look at. The tax base in Atchison County and we're really blessed cuz we have a lot of great assets in organizations, but. Many of them are tax exempt, right? So, so the, um, the people are kind of making that up and so we are, um. Trying to, you know, do all the things that we can to look at. This, um.
Yep.
What I know is, you know, I've been out there, I've taken Project Atchison out there, trying to get it, you know, revitalized and all the things. And all of that is great, but then I get shot down and it's like, it's too far gone. Case like, it's gonna take such an investment, like it's not going to do those things. So, getting it on the tax roll. Getting it sold for as much money and then we have needs, critical needs in our county, um, and. Being able to think futuristic and have something to show for it, um, in years to come for, for the citizens of the county, so. That's kind of where my brain's at, of, of everything I've learned and also, you know, the dam and different things, so.
Correct.
Um, I think educating the public on, uh.
Where the money's going.
Costing, what it's, uh, costing us not having tax revenue, uh, the continued maintenance of the facility. Uh, the bridge has been doing that, that takes them away from their other duties. Um, I think that. Something that we need to be aware of, and we just talked about floodplains, as if this is a development or something.
Yeah.
How much can be built? I mean, in those areas, if it's a floodplain with, for the septic system. Say, it's gonna subdivide it into. Or housing, which I don't know if that's where this is going or not, but potential.
Yeah.
That, uh, we need to be upfront about that, so we don't have the same situation where we're actually. Champion and buy some of this or buy this and subdivide it, and then we can't supply the. I mean, it's in a floodplain and can't.
Correct.
Go through with that, but.
Yeah.
Um. This is in my district and I know there's some local people that it's the nostalgia of, of having. The, the property has been in the county for a long time, and so I think that's for, for me in my. Area, the county, I think that's gonna be the biggest hurdle.
Just educating people on, on A, what it costs. B, where we can allocate, cuz I think the other thing too, I mean, anybody that's. You know, whether it's a raise in taxes or if you're selling a property, anybody, any taxpayers are wanting to know. Okay, we're good with this, but where's the money being used? So having a, having a specific. Answer to that is probably gonna be, just, my, just speaking out loud from where I'm coming from. If I lived in that area, I would wanna know, okay, specifically where are these funds going if we sell this place?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's important. Um, so first things first, you know, you guys wanted to touch on, you know, the process, you wanna touch on commission, this and that. Um, I guess the big question I have for you guys is to start it off is on price. You've had several different brokerages talk to you about the property, right?
Yeah, we reached out to them.
Yeah, okay, so what, what's kind of your guys' consensus on price? It's probably all over the place a little bit, isn't it?
I mean, we're leaning on the professionals. You're the professional.
Absolutely.
You gave us what you thought it was last time you were here, and so.
Yep.
That was intriguing to us, right? Cuz if you would have came in and said, oh, it's worth two hundred thousand dollars, we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation.
Absolutely.
When you tell us, you know, hey, you could possibly get one point six million and, you know, that's, that's a game changer. Not only for that, but also the thought of putting it on the tax roll, that many acres generating year after year of more income. You know, it's.
Absolutely.
I, I, if, if, I would like to see a few more comps.
Yeah.
Honestly, we, you gave us a few, but.
Yeah, for sure.
I didn't think they were quite comparable. I know it's hard.
I was gonna say.
I understand it's hard.
Yeah.
But if, if possibly, if you could get us just a few more, you can dial in more specifically on, kind of what we have. Um, but short of that, I, I think we're, I think we're in the ballpark here. I feel like we are.
Yeah, and to be honest, I mean, it's not every day, I mean. You could go back two years and you're not gonna find a sixty acre lake on comps. You're just not gonna find it. So it's not, you know, if it was a hundred and sixty acres or. Hundred and twenty tillable, class three soil, I could get you within a hundred dollars per acre. Pretty tight. This one. This is about as unique of a property as it gets, right? So, um, I did request and I got some more comps from Aaron Shin. He's an appraiser that works in northeast as well. As far as looking at, okay, larger tracts of water as well, what we've seen, you know, from Miami County all the way up north. Um, so I can share those with you guys as well. Um, so yeah, we can dive into more on pricing and, and kind of see, but as far as. As far as my evaluation that I had the last time, I don't feel like anything's changed from that. You know, the market stayed real steady, it's. It's kind of been a plateau for the last six months on pricing, so there's nothing, nothing astronomically high or low that's changed.
To be clear, if we're in the driver's seat of the seller.
Yeah.
And it's listed, we can. Refuse an offer if it came from a nonprofit.
Correct.
Okay.
And on something like that.
That has been a concern from.
Yep.
Some of this, like, what happens if, if you sell it and it's another exempt, you're not getting anywhere.
You're not gaining anything besides just the sold price and then that's it.
That's over and we're thinking long-term and, you know, all the.
Yeah.
The years ahead and.
Absolutely. So on something like that, it's always good to, um, it's always good to address that upfront. So like. Anybody that would call on the listing, I would tell them right away, you know, here's the situation. Absolutely.
What is the timeline that you would suggest to get? I mean, if we determine this is our best path forward, cuz I, so I'm a planner and I like to have timelines and especially. We're wanting to get information out to the public.
I appreciate that.
If we know, like, hey, we need to get it on care and in the globe and all the things so that we have a decision made by X, you know what I mean? Like, what is your timeline suggestion to get the most?
Um, so when it comes to land, you know, the housing market, you're gonna have warmer weather, cooler weather, right? When it comes to land, there's not much difference between months as far as, you know, the market changing at all. It's very steady throughout all twelve months. So, really, it comes down to, I mean, on a property like this, um. I mean, we can be ready in two weeks.
And you're also anticipating it's gonna take some time.
It's hard to say. I would, I would have your ducks in a row before we say, all right, we're ready to go. Because, I mean, I wouldn't be shocked if, it might take six months, it might take six days to get our contract. So, I wouldn't, I'd make sure you have all your ducks in a row. I mean, the last, the last three properties that we've had for sale in. Jefferson County, just south of the line, have all gone under contract in the first week. So, they're all, yeah. As far as days on market, my average is like thirty-eight. How about, that'll give you kind of a number. Yep. Um, and then, you know, when you're talking about, okay, going on the market, whether timing wise as far as selling, um. I, I would have everything that we need to address on the backend done before doing that. Because then, you know, from the perspective of a potential buyer, you know, if they need to wait for a road to be decommissioned, if they need to wait for. You know, anything of any of that due diligence, that's important to have done kind of in advance versus.
Okay, and we will have to plat those roads because the roads that are there will be, continue to be county roads.
Correct.
But they will need to be platted as they were not, so.
So what about, uh, obviously the road on the north side of the property that goes through there, right? That's gonna be your main travel. What about the south side?
Um, I know that.
Here's kind of the math, if you need to look at it again.
But that might be good for us to add to the road tour and then get back to him, cuz we're already a little behind on the timeline today.
Okay.
Um. That.
Cuz obviously you can't close a road when you've got it, it's a public road and people are, you know, you got houses in directions.
Yeah, and we're aware of some, um, due diligence things we need to do on our end.
Yeah.
Um, can you send a list to Mark as far as like what you need from us, a checklist type deal?
Absolutely.
And then we can, you know, do our due diligence and get our ducks in a row, so to speak, to know, okay, we need to do X, Y, and Z.
Yep.
Um. And then also, if you could send kind of what you're looking at from a commission standpoint to him, so we know.
For sure.
What that looks like, cuz I know when we asked last time, you know, everything's negotiable and that's what we're, we're looking at, so.
So typically, and we'll touch on that real quick here. I know you don't have a ton of time, but, so. What I like to do, u- usually agents and brokerages will have a set, set commission number, right? You know, I work for X amount, six percent, whatever it is. We work to earn that commission. So, the way that I like to structure it is based off of sale price. So, typically, we're gonna sell nine percent higher than the competition. That's just, that's just the, the flat number throughout the entire. Heartland MLS, we're gonna sell nine percent higher. So, on average, what I will do on some of my listings is to have. Okay, if I'm gonna sell the property ninety-five percent of list price, I'm selling it for a premium, right? We're selling it above, well above market value. If we're able to do that, we're gonna work to earn seven percent. That's the number that we're at on something like that. We're selling it higher, we're putting more money in your pocket at closing than anybody else can, right? So if we can sell for a premium, a premium commission is what we're working towards, right? Now, if I'm gonna sell at the same price as somebody else, right? I don't deserve, we don't deserve a higher price on the commission. Does that make sense? So, typically, my structure is gonna be ninety-five percent and above, seven percent, ninety to ninety-five is six, and I'll email this to you as well. And then anything, if I'm selling anything below ninety percent, you know, that's a five percent commission in my mind. Yep, I'm working at the rate, you know, and giving you the same results as somebody that works at that number. So, I like having it structured that way. That way, you know, it's based off results versus actually just having a flat number. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, you wanted to touch on that. The other thing you want to touch on was timeline. Like I said, I'll send you an email with kind of a due diligence that we need to have kind of ready to go. Um, like I said, for us. Time of year doesn't make a difference too much at all. Um, you know, let's say we were. Any property that I put on the market during a certain season, like let's say. Now, you know, everything's pretty brown. It's not the prettiest thing in the world outside, right? Um, we can take really nice photos, evening sunrise, that kind of thing, but I always make sure to update, let's say we're on the market for forty-five days. Things start greening up, it looks better, I'll go update photos. So, every season I update my photos. That way, A, it looks. Fresh, clean, you know, looks the best it possibly can. You know, we're not gonna short dollars on something like that. Um, and then as far as timeline for selling, like I said, I don't. You can't really predict what that looks like. I mean, it could be day one, it could be day one sixty. You know, it's hard to say on something like that. For sure, especially being a unique property like it is.
Yeah.
But the phone will ring a lot, I can promise you that. Yep. Uh, next question you guys wanted to touch on was step-by-step process for the transaction. What do you mean by that? That was in the email.
Oh. Just like what we, I guess we kind of covered it in, in a timeline, like what did you need from us before you could move forward and then? What did we need to do before you can move forward again on the next thing?
The other question I have, I guess, on something like that is the fact that, uh, is, is. Who, who has to, let's say we were to list it, let's say we go on the market, we get an offer. Who is? Who's the decision maker? Who's signing? I mean, what's that look like?
Three of us.
Three of you guys, the commission, okay, got it, perfect, okay. Always good to kind of have an idea of what that. Always good to kind of have an idea of what that looks like, yep, absolutely.
Do you have other questions for him?
No.
Okay.
Not, not today.
Perfect, I think the last thing was just requirements to sell, you know, that's gonna be that due diligence list, and I'll, I'll work with Mark on it, and we'll send that over for sure.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
What about your guys' timeline, do you have any idea?
I mean, as soon as we can get information from the appraiser and get our one pager and get information out to the public.
Yep.
To allow them time to understand and have, you know, deep conversations, um.
So where you guys are, where you guys are.
Getting like seventy six views on our meetings, even though they're recorded, so we're trying other avenues, social media and different things to get people. And I've had some calls on it with concerns, and that's why it's really good to hear perspective, right? Because like the nonprofit, like.
For sure.
You know, those, or some of them are upset, and then by the end of the conversation, they acknowledged to me, I was like. Thanks for talking through that because it was nostalgia, right, like.
Hundred percent.
So it's just a book, but giving the opportunity for people to know what we're doing here, why we're doing it, you know, and.
Correct.
And just making sure we have that timeline, and then I think, you know, unless something earth shattering. Um, I would say I'm ready, but I want that time to be able to visit with, with the public.
So as far as, as far as you're talking about the one pager, that's just.
For us.
That's for you guys to notify.
The public.
The public that you guys are thinking about this.
Yeah, we want just something easy, something with easy to read information. That understands the bullet points of why are we even having this conversation, um, and just giving them the information.
Yep.
That they need.
At first I was thinking for sale by owner, and I was like, oh, man, that's, that's gonna be a headache.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
No, that, that was kind of, um, one of my concerns, again, it's my.
Yeah.
Area, and I don't think people, uh, would appreciate waking up to a headline in the globe saying that the part, that the lake just sold. You know.
Correct.
You know, and that be the first, um, uh, notice that that it was even for sale, so.
Absolutely.
As a county, I think we are, it's our responsibility to kind of inform, um, the, everyone around that, uh. This is a potential.
This is a consideration.
This is still a potential sale at this time, it's like, why, uh, how much it's worth, and all of these things kind of need to be. Uh, thought of, and I know there's gonna be opposition, um, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure. And I think, you know, the more I think about this, um, and this just came to me right now, but being able to. You know, let's, let's say we are looking at listing, putting it on the market, I think something like this would be very, it would be smart to have a. To pu- also put out a video talking about, okay, here's what we're considering. You know, this is the why we're looking at selling the property, here's the reason for it, here is. Here are the tax implications, and here's what we're trying to achieve.
Mm-hmm.
I think something like that would be very appreciated by the public as well, and that's something that we can definitely help out and handle as well.
That sounds good, no, I appreciate your input, and, um, we actually have been through, um, a sale of a county facility in the past few years.
Yep.
Um, we owned a, a nursing home, a, a long-term care facility, and so that dealt with people. So you talk about, you know, opposition, those, but it was good because you want to be heard and understand, right? And then, even to this day after we sold it, people are still coming back with questions like, how is it going, you know?
Yep.
And watching the capital improvements that that business has done, watching the taxes roll in on, you know, the tax roll, it's like, and then this. The folk that are actually living there, seeing the improvements for them, it, it was a win-win, like. But again, back in the day, the counties ran long-term care facilities more, you know. It was more frequent, and so it was just us identifying that it's not what we should be doing, it's in the best interest of the county to move beyond that, so. And we're still gonna have opposition, but it's just being good, when you sit in this position, just making sure you're due diligence, so if you make a hard decision, you don't have regret.
For sure.
Like, you're not gonna make everyone happy, but you just gotta make sure that you did everything you can to.
For sure, and then also, you know, as far as just people being surprised by it, that'll be the other factor of it as well, is making sure that they understand, you know, it's not.
Transparency.
Yeah, communication transparency would be huge, absolutely. Um, anything else from me that you guys need?
I think just when you send that info to Mark, then we'll get the ball rolling kind of as far as communication of.
Yep.
What, what the checklists look like.
Okay. Perfect, yeah, if there's anything else, I'll send you guys an email also, and we'll touch base on it. Perfect.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's all good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys for the time.
Next on our agenda is Ernie Batista, USD three seventy seven maintenance with a sports complex update. Hi, welcome, come up here, sir.
And if you, what, two of you bring, bring a chair on up or? Coming in with a blind, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
You want a hard chair or a soft chair?
So thank you for coming, um, we had just realized, um. In December of twenty twenty two, um, we had allocated some of the funds from the sales tax that was generating. Um, four hundred to Atchison and a hundred to S and E M, um, in doing that, we had received. Proposed projects submitted, um, by your group, um, approximately forty six thousand two ninety three that we have. Um, so we just kind of wanted to get together again, re-look at that again and understand what's been done, what hasn't. Um, if you have other needs that should be added here, um, so, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
And you have, this came from you, I believe, so you, this was your list. Because Si Wallace was included for a bit, but he retired, right, so you created the, do you have this list?
Well, we received from Mark two different tables, the top table is what we originally promoted, presented as needs.
Okay.
The bottom is what's completed.
Okay.
Those are the things that we were reimbursed for, um, and we're showing fifty three thousand and three. I'm assuming that it, it just says total at the bottom, but like you got back with these things at the bottom are what we submitted for reimbursement for and received. Um.
Of the field groomer, okay, I'm gonna add that one on. Actually, here, I'll make a quick copy.
No, yeah. It's in the spreadsheet that I sent. Oh, in Mark, so I think it's new projects, I think, um.
Well, she's coming, I'll just say, yeah, we've got needs, we've got a lot of needs, tremendous amount of needs. Um, but we're also significantly cognizant of, of the county's funds and, and the funds that are available, not really knowing what funds are available, makes it hard to prioritize needs.
We can help you answer that.
Yeah, like for instance, uh, we had a transformer, an Evergy transformer blow on a power line which lost all of our pathway lights. And for about a year, we've been in conflict with Evergy of who's responsible for paying for this. Um, and, you know, they're not gonna say we're responsible to pay for it. Um, you know, but ultimately they are responsible for paying for it, so it's a matter of, of trying to work through that. Um. You know, we were just talking, we replace at least one stool a year. At least one, um, you know, there are porcelain stools on concrete with all different sizes of people and kids going in and using those. So we at least replace one a year, um, freezing is an issue, our, our concession facility is not brick like Atchison's. It's a metal building, so, um, freezing is a huge issue for it, and with that, you break urinals and stools, sinks. Um, the quote that we submitted there was, was in hopes of going to stainless steel like they did in Atchison. Um, which would save, but it's a lot of money, I mean, it's, it's a significant difference in buying porcelain. Um, so, you know, we, we tried to be, we tried to look out for the best interests of our district, but also the, the, being good stewards of the county money that's there. Um. And, and do with that, we did replace a lot, um, red shale once on our own, this was prior to knowing that we could come and ask for additional money above what we got each year. Um, that was about twenty thousand, um, we did it again, this time we found out we had additional money. And you'll see that combined there, it's a little bit over twenty thousand dollars, um, for infields and warning tracks. It's about twenty thousand dollars about every three years, is what it costs us, uh, cause the location where they are, there's tremendous amount of wind. Um, and, you know, with fine shale like it is, it just, it just blows, um. You know. The, the asphalt trails, um, we, we've sealed them on our own. Again, we didn't realize we could request additional funds, um, Ernie and his crew went down and sealed all the cracks and did an overlayment of all that asphalt walk. Um, in the heat of August, late August, um, one time. Uh, but, you know, they're, they're beyond the point of probably just being able to reseal them, so we put a quote in for that. Um, and that was, um, pretty conservative, that was from, uh, approved paving here, here in Atchison. Original quote, Ernie's got it from a few years back, um, but what is the best option? For that is to continue with pavement or, you know, concrete's a little more expensive, we were at a time there where concrete was about even. Um, it is, it is now not, um. The scoreboard control boxes, um, are beginning to fail, we had one rebuilt last year. Maybe two, I can't remember. Um. All those, you know, uh, a lot of, a lot of other just little maintenance things, um. So I've got a, I've got a larger list, this is comprised from a lot of people, if you guys, that one's got stuff on the back, I accidentally printed on another piece of paper.
Thank you.
Um, and these aren't ranked in any order of priority, um. If, you want one, just please. You know, there are a lot on here, I mean, you'll, you'll notice about halfway down artificial surface for the infield. That's, that's a big wish, you know, but again, not knowing what funds are available, uh, the other question I had is how is, I know. Um, my base, I'll say basic knowledge of elections and, and usage of funds generated by tax during elections, there's, there's certain things that can. And can't be used for, uh, we don't have any security cameras on our facility, that is a need, um, as well. Um, we did put in cameras to, uh, automated camera system, we were able to get a grant to put an automated camera system. So we can stream, live stream our baseball softball games, um, and we have to, we, we extend the wifi for that. We had to purchase some, some IT equipment in order to get the internet broadcast out to that facility. Um. Um, you know, and the, the existing batting cages, uh, because all of that dirt, when that was constructed, was, was moved. Uh, the, the metal poles that hold our, um, batting cage. Have, have fallen in once, we straightened them, and they're, they're falling in again, and just because that, that's not original ground. It was all moved to, to build those, those, uh, facilities. Um, so that's, you know, a need, the netting is in, in disrepair from wind. Um, you know, the coaches would like bench bullpens outside of, out of the, outside of the fence, so that, you know. They go out and warm up and they're right there and readily available, uh, without balls accidentally flying over the fence into the, into the field of play. Um. The dugout benches, um, again, because of the amount of wind that comes through that facility, it's a regular occurrence, we've actually had. The, the, the dugout bench on the softball complex on our home side, pick up and move a student sitting on the bench. Um, just because of the wind goes through there, so they're bent, mangled, um, they need to be replaced. Uh, the electrical poles in the dugouts, um, are, are in, I mean, not great repair. Um. So, you know, so this is kind of, kind of where we are, um, storage has continually become an issue, so. Um, you know, one large facility, or we've, we've, we actually were gonna move, tried to attempt to, um. Milliron V came out and tried to help us, we've got two old sheds at our central office that aren't really being used, and we wanted to try to move them. And they just can't be moved, um, they would, they would collapse, um, but the concession stand has a, a back storage facility. But that really is for our chockers, um, the, the, the groomer, field groomer. Um, the bases, and it, it fills up with that, so as far as any type of equipment storage, there's just none. Um, and it's also quite a distance, I don't know how many of you have been to our, our facility or not, there's quite a distance from the concession facility down to the field. So if you have back-to-back games you needed to chalk it, you know, it'd be a lot easier if it was stored out there in closer proximity to the fields. Um. Yeah, so. I didn't total this, and some of it we aren't for sure, like I said, the pathways, that, I don't know, we don't, aren't for sure. What it's gonna cost to fix, so because we're waiting on, we've been waiting on word back from Evergy on what exactly that would entail. Hawk Electric's been kind of our go-between, that's what we've said, it's best if an electrician works with them and says, hey, this isn't on their end, this is on yours. Um.
Actually, electrician from Hawk Electric was sitting there with me, Dan Freeman, when the Fox.
Yeah, blue, blue alignment off the pole. Yeah.
Um. It was a.
Yeah, it, um, it did that twice, um, but, uh, one time was much more, they've. They were able to fix everything from the original time, and again, that lineman that got blown off the pole, who's a patron and, and avid. Uh, baseball, softball, he, he did some of his own work to get everything up that time, but the pathways. Um, we haven't gotten to the bottom of those. Um, you know, one of them on here is, is potentially enclosing the facility, um. It, it wasn't enclosed like the Atchison facility was, so. Taking any type of gate at any type of event is just really not feasible, there's just too many points of entry. Um, and, and people, you know, tend to avoid, um, that. Um. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of our list of, of. You know. Some, some things we've come up with, um, and we'll take any questions you might have, so.
I appreciate this, um, to answer your first question, um, so. You under, a quarter cent sales tax is generated for these specific. Projects, um, and statements as, at the end of December thirty first of twenty four. Have funds in it of one million eight hundred fifty three thousand one eighty eight ninety two. They're currently set to sunset, this tax will sunset December of twenty twenty seven. And the projection. Um, for that. It generates typically six hundred thousand, um, annually, so.
Two point four.
Where. What's that?
Two point four.
Well, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, so one point eight.
Yeah.
Um, roughly, so.
So the one point eight is projected ending balance in twenty twenty seven?
No, the one, the one point eight is what is in the funds as of the end of twenty twenty four. And then if we, the plan is to let it continue. Until December of twenty twenty seven, then that.
Being a.
Yeah.
The two one point eights trimming off.
No, you're fine, sorry.
Look.
It's ironic, those numbers are, yeah, but, um, I think that it's important when there's needs and money. To get the money where it's intended to go, into the fields for the children, the kids, and making the improvements and all of the things, so.
So, yeah, I, the big thing would be to have to prioritize what your needs are. And I would keep a, a good eye on things that are, don't cost a lot to maintain.
Yeah.
Because when twenty twenty seven hits and this goes away, then it will be maintained in a different form. It's not been set yet where it's gonna be coming from, but, uh, I assume that three seventy seven and we'll probably. Since you own that facility, at some point will be, uh, have to generate the funds for the maintenance, and we haven't figured out the east side yet, but. You know, uh, certain things, you know, you can buy, well, you know, you never spent another dime for, other things are. Other things are you spend forty thousand and maybe three years later you have to replace it. So, you know, I, uh, and I know. That's not for us to determine. That's for people that, you know, you're in the driver's seat on that. You've, you've got good heads on your shoulders and determine what's the best bang for the buck. What's going to be easy to maintain, uh, and all of that. Um, and so then at, you know, at twenty twenty-seven, that. Tax will go away. I don't know if everything will be spent. We've talked about with Pat about different ways of, you know. If that, the maintenance could go out further, if it's already been collected. If it's not spent on projects, but it looks like there would be plenty of projects to get it spent on. So, you know, it's, I. I guess if it was mine, I also wouldn't. Spend it just because I think it has to be spent. I mean, we'll try to attempt to work in every way with, keep it in the best bang for the buck. For everybody to be able to spend it if it's maintenance. And we could project out on out beyond if there's some money left, that's a possibility.
Okay.
Of course, that will be determined by the commissioners at the time, you know, so.
Well, you're not going to be here. You never know.
We never know. We never know.
So I guess my next question would be, what is that process? What is that process? If we, um, you know, go and we replace the stools, you know, or need more red shale. Do we notify, come get permission ahead of time, then submit reimbursement once it's expended? Because that was kind of a new item for us is how, how does that work? What's, how's that been handled before it was, this is roughly, I think it was around two hundred and fifty thousand, we were told potentially last time. Between the two, and we came up about fifty at a hundred and twenty-five thousand requests. Um, what is that look like?
So ideally, I think just to communicate with, with Mark, uh, these are our needs.
Good.
And then for us to sit here and say. We, are we ready, you know?
Good.
Because at the end of the day, like, it's not our job to micromanage the needs of the facilities.
What?
We just need you to come, tell us what they are and.
Okay.
We do it in an open meeting and, and authorize the, the dollars, I mean. That's what it was, that's what the people voted for to generate the tax and to let it just sit there with not, when there's needs, it seems silly to.
So we, and I don't know whether there's a question for Pat. Um, as far as bid law, we would, we would do the RFP for anything over the twenty thousand threshold. Come and say this and show proof of bid law, I'm assuming is what they would want. Um, we would do the initial purchase and then we would be in a reimbursement fashion. So would you need to note, I guess my question is, is would you want that documentation as far as reimbursement that we follow?
I don't remember what you did last time on it. Maybe none of those.
When, nothing was, I don't think anything was quite, um.
Yeah.
High enough, um, the way it broke, broke out.
I, I mean, if, if we're doing reimbursement to you, you. Yeah, I think we would trust that you took the process.
Yeah, I mean, our obligation would be to follow it. I just didn't know on your end whether you would. Ease the paperwork, part of it is, we could say this is the bids we took. This is the one that was accepted and purchased, so.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, in the past. Have you kept, you have a way of differentiating between maintenance, like annual maintenance? And, you know, cost, facility costs, like specific facility costs. Because as we're moving towards twenty-seven, we have to make it a similar, uh. Do we continue some kind of funding? Does it end when the, you know, when we sunset? Uh, and so what, what I would like to see is a kind of a history and leading into the next two or three years. What it costs to just maintain a facility like you have. Um, you're gonna have, going forward, you know, you're gonna have some of those. Items that you're gonna have to replace. If you go with the metal toilets, you probably not going to have to worry about that. Joy's gonna have lighting, you know, different things you're gonna have to replace. But I'd like to see kind of an average of the last few years moving forward. You know, what does it cost us to maintain? The facility, because that's kind of really what we're looking for. We're looking at, going forward, we're looking at. Just maintaining this facility and the same thing's going to happen here in town. You're going to have to know. Um, kind of an average so that we can get some idea. What it's going to take to keep those places going, right?
Right.
Cause you, that's the main thing and we get, you know, why, why the support for it is here today. Cause you don't want to see it go away or, uh, uh, it, it was a good thing when they did it. And we have to maintain it, you know?
Yeah, we run, we run, we try to run. All of our expenditures for the complex out of one fund. The, the difficulty is when you run into payroll, you know, when we have somebody mow, they mow. You know, they're mowing everywhere. So just to say that this day they were mowing all of that acreage on the sports complex, which takes about two days. Two solid days to mow all of it. That's the part that's a little bit difficult. Um, I think it was, I know it was eight years ago. We, we came and presented a similar type of thing, um, to the county commission. Um, and we had of the three-year span, we had one year we were under the allotment. And then the other two, we were well over. It's just because some of the items are more expensive than, than others. So, yeah, we can definitely try to, um. Put that together.
Just an average, you know, and I know it's, you know, it's gonna, I would expect it that it's gonna go up. In the first year up to, you know, twenty-seven, it's gonna go up. And so we expect that, but. Just to give us some idea, because originally. This was, th- this was budgeted, the, the quarter cent was budgeted to build these facilities from the ground up.
Hmm.
Right? Well, it doesn't cost that much to maintain. Theoretically, you're not gonna need that huge amount taxed. So that's a consideration for us to, to think about, you know, moving forward. We've got to have the figures in front of us. Th- this I appreciate, uh, uh, what you've done here. And, and. Like Eric was saying. Um, you've got, you know, the numbers, uh, Casey gave you the numbers of, of, uh, what we have on hand. I mean, there's a possibility we could even pay, pay this thing off early and save money that way. So those are, that's another consideration we have to consider going ahead and paying, paying this forward. Paying it off early and then, so. It's just some things that we're rolling around here, you know, um. But the money that's there, if we're gonna end in twenty-seven. A lot of that can be used for these upgrades you're talking about, you know?
Definitely, and, you know, maybe the last time I came with Mr. Wallace, you know, and I, I still have the same feeling on it. Um, I'm not the one to promote it, but I think honestly, going back to the ballot and extending it. There, there are a lot of, um, county rec-type needs that, that could be met. Um, and I'm talking west. You go over to Skoda, there's not much for kids and patrons to do. I mean, they're driving to Netta Waka for any type of thing, but the walking trails in town, um, you know, other types of things. You know, our, our track is used more by patrons. It's not, not even able to be competed on now. We can't, we can't afford to, to fix it. Um, but I mean, those are. County-wide, community-wide things, and that takes it, that's a process, you know? Again, being superintendent of the school district, I don't know that I'm the person to, to promote that, but. I, I do think there's a lot of. Uh, opportunity there on a small sales tax that's already there. To continue, but I also know the state of people's minds with taxes, you know?
You know what transparency, we were just talking about, you were sitting in on this, uh, meeting about the, the sale of the lake, possible sale of the county lake. It's all about transparency. I think if people understand, uh, that there is a need and you put it out there, then it, it makes a big difference.
And, you know, there's, I, I just, you know. If you want people to come and occupy the county and live here and raise a family here. We have to have opportunities for families to do things within the county. And, uh, and it's the whole county, and, and you know, I, I reside, you know, middle of it south, you know, and. You go all the way to the west and you go to different portions of it and there's, there's communities that don't have a lot to offer families. And I think if we can. You know. Provide them with, with opportunities, um, to do, might remain in the county. Um, it was like you said, it's going to provide that tax base, um, building new homes and, and, and residing, so. Uh, I would say, say my piece, but yeah, we will, we will work on that average, um, and, and prioritize some of these and, and. It, you may have us back next month trying to get something, something done. If, if there's something we think we, yeah. If you think, if we think there's something we can get done, that, that's an immediate need and not, not tender ball season. Um, we, we could try to do it now that asphalt walkways, we probably won't, well, that, that's going to be a need, but it, we won't do that till probably after. Ball season's done, um, and, uh, continue from there.
And help me understand, um, the Effingham part, is it super, are you the one that's. Creating the need list or the USD three seventy-seven board, or do you, you have a ball association too, right?
Yes. No, most of this, um, are items we are aware of.
Okay.
That have been communicated, but it's also input from our, our, our head coaches. That, that use those facilities most often, like they would like to see more of an open dugout. They would like to see the batting cages down there. And they know, I.
Yep.
You know, I, I played a little bit as baseball softball, more slow pitch than, than anything, but they know what. Um, is going to make it a better facility for our students and the people that are using it than, than what I do. Ernie knows what, what's failing, you know, structurally and everything else. Um, a- and I take it all in and tell them it's too expensive. We gotta make it cheaper. That's, that's kind of my role, so, um, right? So, yeah, I mean, there, there's, um, our AD's has been a member of the ball association. And she, you know, she's seen some of these listed, lists. You know, this is kind of just a quick of what, what we knew needed to be done, plus some other things that were. You know, uh, that were, came to us, you know, when we knew we were coming, coming to visit, so.
Awesome. Sounds good. Could you send us that in the spreadsheet form?
Yeah, I'll clean it up a little bit. Yeah, I'll clean it up and send it digitally, um, it. You know, with the snow and everything else, it was a little bit hectic of, of what, what we were trying to get put together. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Next up, speaking of, uh, sports complex. I have a request for payment for the Kansas sales tax revenue bonds. The third supplemental bond, trust and venture dated as of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. This is payable to L and L Construction for building concession and bathroom with twenty-two thousand nine hundred dollars. This is, um, one of the partial payments that we've been authorizing.
Okay, I'll make the motion to.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up we have, uh. Lieutenant James Stewart, Brian Oswald, Corey Scott, uh, EMS Maintenance, Emergency Operations Center Leaking Room.
Thanks again, guys. Thank you.
You want the company?
I know.
No, yes, you're gonna have to explain. I'm gonna backstory it and you're the expert. So, uh. Little background on this and I'll pass out, uh. Brian's quotes he's got on the situation here. Um, we put the Emergency Operations Center addition on to the EMS building in twenty twenty, I believe. And at that time, um, James's predecessor was the one that spearheaded that project. And, uh, I was not fully aware of the situation. I knew we were having some water issues in that building for some time. And I was led to believe, um, neither here nor there, that it was a condensation issue. So this fall, I noticed it was getting considerably worse and starting to cause damage to the ceiling and whatnot. So brought Brian out to get his opinion on it, since that's. What he does and he discovered there was a bigger problem than we had thought. So this was obviously not budgeted for, known about in its full details. So I'll turn it over to Brian on what he found and what.
Sure quite how it got to where it's at, but they put a new roof on the addition part. Uh, where it got lapped. Uh, it must've had some problems before. And, uh, when they, they sprayed over it, they coated over it, but they did not. I don't know when they did that, so that was after, maybe when they did the addition, they sprayed the red. But I'm not sure on the timing of that. We had, uh, John Trier down, he was doing a roof inspection anyway for the countywide. And, uh, when we came across that roof, he's finding that the seam lap is not sealed. So he proposed coming in, taping all the seams, uh, redoing the screws. And then, uh, putting a coating over the whole roof, the whole addition part of the roof, not the whole. Uh, not the front or anything. Uh, just, uh, what was it, a hundred, eighteen hundred and forty-five square foot. So the backside of the roof, the front, we didn't find any major issues with it.
Okay, so when they put the new roof on, did that become, now there's valleys there? This is just a valley area that's.
Not so much, this is a pitch roof and this is a pitch roof, but when they lapped over, maybe they didn't lap far enough or something, you know? And it's coming back up the lap and then there's a few screws that are in different spots that are, uh.
What is a pitch on that roof? It's probably a, it's not much, is it?
What's that?
Pitch on that roof?
Uh, no, it's probably about three twelve or something like that, yeah. The, the first part of it's probably a four twelve, but, uh, the last part is probably even lower than that. It's, it's kind of touchy and what happens is then it starts to come in in the seam. And then comes on to the tile and then we have to go out and replace tile. And, uh, try to keep them from molding. But, uh, like Corey said, we thought maybe it was an air conditioner condensating, maybe, you know, the tin. But it isn't that. We can see where the water's coming in once we.
And I don't know if we just had heavier rains from a different direction this fall, but it, it definitely showed itself this fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, it finds its way in.
Yeah.
Moisture always finds.
Yeah, and then it's running, the surface tension on the water is allowing it to run down the ribs of the steel and dripping all kinds of places. So initially it was a little difficult to figure out where it was coming from.
Hard to maintain inside and keep the building, you know, anything on there. So I only got one bid so far, uh, and that was from Trier. He's done a lot of work for us in the past. And, uh, it wasn't too bad, so, uh, so far we're at that. I don't think anybody will beat it, but, uh. That number that's on that page is a pretty good number for that. But like I say, we've only got one bid so far, so maybe two other people we can get to bid it. See where we're at, but I, I don't, I don't think we'll go over that price for a- anybody.
So I guess the issue at hand and, and one just here, since it's a shared facility, is, um. The extent of the problem didn't show itself till after budget season and after we've budgeted. And this number, regardless of any of the bids, already exceeds what we have left in the EMS, uh, rescue building maintenance budget. I have no idea what your budget looks like, but that's, that's the situation we're in and looking for options and the commissions. On how to move forward with this, because it is going to cause a lot of damage and a lot more money long-term.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, this number is to fix the water problem in the entire building? Or just the front EOC?
On the back, backside. We don't find any other.
When you say, you mean east, that like the east side? Because. Oh, I know. So I went there this morning and Captain Brader showed me where on the east side in the EOC, it's all stained.
Yes.
But then it's also leaking out in the bit, in the shop. So I was saying, if they fix this, is it going to prevent the leaking?
Not in the shop one. We haven't, we have not found it yet, but it's going to be the same thing. There's one spot.
It's better off to fix the entire problem with a bid.
To do the whole thing.
I'm just saying, like, you're having water run down a light fixture in the shop. I mean.
We have a nice damn problem out there that we've had since the day we moved into that one. I would love to do the whole roof. I would absolutely love to do the whole roof.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
From a money. From a money standpoint, what makes the most sense if it's? Because either way, we didn't budget for it, so it's going to have to be done.
Sure.
And what's piecemealing it when it's still running water over a light fixture in the back doesn't seem like the best choice.
And I I had him, we have a few issues. I think they're more. Uh, soft foot issues out of his other building. So I did have him bid it too, and I think that price would be about the same comparison. To what, uh, your full building would be, but I can have him come back and see if.
I just feel like I would like to see three bids to fix the water issues at the emergencies. Medical station deceit.
Well, I guess we don't.
Pictures to show you.
But we haven't figured out what the cost, uh, the cause of the second leak or.
Well, we need to.
It's not so much the causes. We don't know the exact location. It's an ice dam problem. That one only occurs in the winter when we have ice dams on the roof. We don't have any issue with that during non-freezing weather. So it's difficult to figure out where that leak is.
It uh, it has a.
I'm open to whatever the commission wants to do.
Does that make sense though? Like it just to spend?
Yeah.
To still have it, like, I guess I just want to understand the difference and if.
What was the fix though? If we don't know, is, is it the spray coat again?
Well, if you, if you spray coated the whole thing, that would probably find the one spot wherever it's coming into the shop at.
Okay, that's what I I didn't know what the fix was. You know, if we don't know exactly where, maybe we don't know why.
And I think, uh, on that spray coating, he's given, yeah, it says ten years labor, twenty year material. On that warranty, so, uh, then we'd at least be able to cover it for the next ten years for labor and material.
With that being said, if this addition was just done in twenty twenty, is there warranty?
I don't, we we're, I'm trying to find out who did the spray. It's a, you know, who did it?
I'm gonna have to go back there.
And was it? They done the, the.
Was it done prior to the addition or was it, we can't really tell?
I, but the whole thing was probably done prior to the addition, but that would be the the shop area.
That'd be pre twenty fourteen, likely.
Wouldn't have been pre.
I had nothing to do with it, so it would have definitely been pre twenty sixteen.
Well, I was thinking it was handled by, uh, webs at the time.
Yeah, it had to have been.
If we can find any information on that, that'd be great.
I was thinking it was a couple of years after we bought the building. We bought that in fifteen or sixteen.
I could be wrong. I thought it was fourteen. It was purchased, but.
I wasn't a commissioner till March of fifteen.
Okay.
And so it had to have been after that.
I was working for the, the ambulance ser- well, both the hospital and the private ambulance service I worked for. But then I was just trying to remember when we moved out there. Yeah, you may be very right. I may have that very wrong, but in in any case, I don't know who did the spray, because it.
And to my mo- knowledge, it seemed to me like it was a couple of years after we bought the building, so if we bought it in sixteen. Probably eighteen would have been about the. I'm just trying to fly by memory, just sort of, yeah, if somebody can.
I do know on his inspection, he okayed the rest of the roof. Uh, and other than the spot where they got that, but he, you know, said the rest of the roof looked pretty good. When we were asking him and that's why he bid just that part, so, uh, we can, but I can go back and have him. Did the whole thing too.
I would just like to see the comparison, like, and even if we decide to only pay for that front portion, which is fine. Um, I think answering the question where the money comes from, I mean, I don't.
Well, that might be a budgeted item for twenty twenty six.
Well.
Yeah.
Or.
If if.
I mean, I guess I'm saying if this is an immediate need, I don't feel like we should come out of the twenty twenty five budgets anywhere. Because this wasn't budgeted for, right? Like, so that would be like a reserve expense that we.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we're we're up here is because it was not an expected expense.
Yeah, and for us is like, when we're doing our due diligence budgeting, it makes no sense to try to rob Peter to pay Paul when it wasn't. Understood. That's why we have the emergency reserve for issues.
So if if you had to guess, this, this is eighteen hundred square feet, almost nineteen, what would the other half? Would it be equivalent to that?
It would, uh, it would be, yeah, this is about a third of it. So if you did that by three, you'd probably be close to what you're, if you, if you pick the first one by. Three, then you'd be about right with what we've got left, because this is about a third of the building.
And help me understand if the water keeps running on those light fixtures. Is there any additional cost we could incur?
Yeah, oh yeah, sure. I mean, you know, uh, we could eventually short out a light. Uh, it's one of those things that you got to catch it at the right time. We haven't been able to do that. Uh, we haven't been able to get on the roof because it's the wrong time of year to get up on the roof. It's it's just one of them things that if we caught it and what we're going to try to do this spring is walk it with a garden hose. And if we find that one spot, then we've got it. Uh, but everything else seems to be okay on that roof. So we were thinking we did the third and then found the patch on the other side. And he's willing to look for that while he's doing the third.
And Mark just found, uh, a. Yeah, but I think it's just for insulating the attic.
Yeah, it's a different thing.
Ryan, is all the roofing rehab done on the exterior then? Like, to fix something like this, because like, when you look up in that shop and today's the first day I've done that. I couldn't believe how piecemealed it was, like, put together and I was like, oh my gosh, but something like, unless there's a problem, you don't look.
That's the way we inherited that building. I do know that.
I know that when we climbed through the attic to find, uh, short or something, we found a lot of, uh, loose groundwork. And it's, uh, usually we cause more problems by going through the ceiling than we do. Yeah, it's like I went to catch one in the kitchen and I think we knocked out two other rooms just climbing through that to get to that one. So these are, it's it's just an inherited building and.
Is it tin on, on the outside the entire way down?
Yes.
Okay, so if it is an ice issue, then it's not the tin's problem. That's why he's saying the roof looks okay.
And even the spray coating needs to end up okay.
Got it.
Got one screw or one seam somewhere and and like he said, it's difficult because, yeah, you see it running through the ceiling in one spot. But with tin, you know, the water will run down a rib until it drips, so it's really difficult to find it.
And maybe that was maybe the condensation thought. I don't know. And that one versus the other one.
That portion of it wasn't, wasn't what I did at that time, so I'm I'm not sure where that came from. I'd hate to guess.
Well, so you're gonna go.
We'll go back and get him the.
And bring your recommendation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So do we want the other two quotes? I haven't even looked at it to do it. It's split, so we could do either or. So if that way it would be compared apples to apples.
Yes, sir. I like that.
If they're all three, it'd be a single with this problem and or together with the whole one.
Something to consider though for us is that. We're just getting into, we're, we're, can we get into the rainy season here soon? So we need to get this thing done.
And I'll get on it. We were just trying to get the fix and the cheapest that we could do, you know?
And get it in front of you for the first time. We didn't expect a solution out of this today. Just, just get everybody informed and what the process is. We've taken so far.
Yeah, what I know of roofing, that's a reason.
He's been very fair with us over the past. He's done several roofs for us, some at senior village and our courthouse roofs here.
So just so they have direction when they come back to us with a purchase order and a recommendation, do we want that to be paid out of reserve?
Okay.
I mean, I think.
I would think so.
Okay. You're good to pay the roofing fix out of reserve?
Yeah.
Okay, you got that for reserve? Okay.
One more.
Do you have anything to add? You guys did a great job.
One more, uh, tragedy that happened to Corey's building. He lost the heater.
The heater at the rescue barn died and, um, Brian went and had a look at it and got some prices. Um, this particular quote is to actually replace the heater. And then what was it, a thousand dollars for the part?
Yeah, the actual part to fix the heater is a thousand dollars. So, so he suggested, he said, why, why take an old heater that you have no warranty on? And put this thousand dollars in it instead of doing one like this and getting a ten year heat exchange warranty, three year parts on it.
Does this heat the entire building?
That, this would, this unit would heat the entire building on that side, not the entire building, but Corey's side.
Just the rescue barns. Uh, currently it's got two overhead radiant tube heaters in it, but one of those two has failed and that's the thousand dollar part. Currently, what we're doing is we've opened that internal garage door that used to be the south wall. And the heater in that intermediate location where Brian's shop is, is we're using, using that to supplement and got some fans going. So we're, we're okay. We've got enough heat to keep everything safe.
Before spring, you could spend that.
But yeah, we're spending more money in natural gas at the moment, because we're, we're doing this supplemental thing to just get us by, so.
What?
And I have no idea how old those heaters are. Well, I couldn't, gosh, when did they have that addition beforehand?
I don't know.
Yeah, predates me by quite a bit. I remember going up, I was working for the hospital down here at the time on that ambulance service. But I I couldn't tell you the age of the building or those, those heaters.
Help me understand why we need heat in that bay. Or the storage, because I know you have a lot of equipment stored there. I'm trying to remember, is it winterized? I know the boats in there.
Well, you have, yeah, the the boats get, um, drained, but they don't get winterized in the sense like if you owned your own boat. Because they have to be ready to go.
Oh.
So the boats have to be heated and then all the medical supplies, there's, there's IV fluids or all those things. The the building has to be heated to keep the the equipment and the medical supply preserved. Yeah, and it does have running water, so.
I appreciate the perspective, because I was. What's in there and winterizing the boats.
Fill the boats with antifreeze and everything else like a private citizen would do. That boat still has to be able to go even in cold weather, so they're just drained.
Yep.
So they're not winterized in that sense, so they're, in that sense alone, there has to be heat, so those, those boats are ready to go to moments notice.
So do we need another bid on this?
So with this being under your threshold of spending, we should be fine.
Should be fine. Uh, it's gonna push my, my building maintenance budget to its, to its extremes. I mean, we we only plan about eight thousand for those three facilities a year, so it's, but it is something we can manage.
Okay. You want a purchase order authorized today?
Um, I'm taking Brian, again, Brian's the expert on this, whatever he thinks.
If you get a purchase order today, then we'll get him started on it.
Okay, and this will come out of your building maintenance. Hey.
I can probably supplement a little bit with our equipment one too.
Okay, I would look for a motion, um, to authorize Sowers Heating and Cooling to install. A B M H zero eight zero N G eighty thousand B T U unit heater in the recycling center. Um, in the amount of two thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to be paid out of our. EMS building maintenance budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. And for clarity, it's former recycling center that, I mean, just, we don't look.
Yeah.
Kind of. Multi-purpose building.
Yes, multi-purpose building, because it could be, uh, construed with our new recycling center.
Thank you.
Multi-purpose maintenance, rescue and share.
The rescue, yeah, the rescues. Two thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
And you'll go ahead and take care of that for me. I appreciate that. Twenty-five oh five, US seventy-three.
Thank you.
That's all we have, or all I have.
Mark's giving us.
Find anything, send it to me on that.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Good afternoon.
You too.
Are we staying on task? That is amazing. Um. It's a lot. It's, yeah, it's all you. No. Yes, it is.
What is the basis for?
Uh, the purchases for this heat heater.
Okay.
Yep. While you're working on that, can I flip flop you and Bria?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, Bria is here with the clerk of district court, um, with the P O and invoice consideration.
Okay, um, I have an invoice here from Brandy Sayer. Uh, she is a court reporter. And, um, she did a jury trial, um, transcript for us and the amount is two thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, judge has found the defendant indigent, so since he has found the defendant indigent. Um, it is district court's responsibility to pay this invoice.
Do you know what was it about? Did we have a line item to put it for these?
Um, there is a line item for transcripts. I just don't know.
Okay, that's all good. I have it right here. I'll pull it up.
Who's the figure?
Two thousand nine hundred fifty-seven and fifty cents.
I know, my little spreadsheet is. Or, here we go, transcripts, we have four thousand dollars and how much?
Two thousand nine hundred fifty-seven and fifty cents.
Um, you wanna make a purchase order for that one too?
Sure.
Okay, I'll call for a motion. Do you guys have any questions for Bria?
Oh, how often does that happen when this type of thing?
Um, last year we only had it happen one time. Um, he appealed his jury trial verdict, so that's why.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I would look for a motion, um, to pay the invoice to Sayer Reporting LLC. As presented by our clerk of district court in the amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And this will be paid out of the unified courts budget under the transcripts line. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Are we actually gonna have a P O to?
Yeah, he's gonna do one. I'll hand him that one. We sign it and then he can. Will you mind handing that to Mark?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the township update? Um, so we've had some decent response. We have seven of eight towns with annual benefits.
Wow.
Nice. Yeah, so, um, one, grasshoppers we have received, but we can't open it. It doesn't like some formulas that are in there. And she did some, um, explain that she was having trouble with formulas and getting it to balance, so. I'm not sure what to do there. I may bring you in to see if you could look at it, um, and see what's wrong with it. But, uh, the only one that we are awaiting on still is Mount Pleasant.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Have you had?
Fire stations or cemeteries. I didn't realize I needed to get all those as well.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll lean into this week.
So has Mount, Mount Pleasant responded or just haven't got it in yet?
I haven't, um, I don't think I've gotten a response from them. And I've done email and, um, text and call. Hey. I'm assuming somebody isn't getting something, something's not right. Communication's not getting through, so. Um, I, I, I take that back. I had a response from one saying I needed to contact another, and so I contacted the other and I haven't heard back from the other.
Um, I, I, I take that back. I had a response from one saying I needed to contact another, and so I contacted the other and I haven't heard back from the other.
Yeah, so. Great.
Awesome.
May have to go back to the first one and say. Okay. So that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you.
And the agenda went out. Oh, on the main, perfect.
All right, we have Mark Zeltmeyer, uh, finance director, P O considerations, bridge and road bonds.
Yeah, so um, it is time for our bond payments uh, to be paid. The due date is April first. So the road bond payment is five of fourteen for twenty-three thousand oh fifty-four sixty-three. The amount remaining is one million four hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, and the bridge, I just put them all together. They go to the same um, entity, the office of the Kansas State Treasurer. So I just have the invoices back here and then payoffs or the amortization schedule. But the bridge bond is payment thirteen of twenty for fourteen thousand eight twenty-eight even. And the amount remaining is eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, I would look for a motion to approve um, the road bond payment and bridge bond payment as presented by our. By our finance director in the total amount of thirty-seven thousand eight eighty-two sixty-three. This will come out of the road and bridge budget.
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no notices and communications, introductions and considerations, resolutions. Um. We have one fifteen minute. Uh, one fifteen, fifteen minute executive session with just H R and commissioners.
Yeah.
Only?
Yes, um, just not like, not elected.
I'll move it up the board of county commissioners and session to the executive session at twelve thirteen. E M to discuss personal matters of non-eligible personnel is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B E one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners and H R.
I'll second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in public session. Um, Pat, did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay, so um, with nothing else on, I would look to adjourn into a. Workshop road tour for our cost share bridges. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. One thing to note, the, it will be commissioners, road and bridge superintendent, county clerk and finance director.
And what about the, when we finish, it will be, when we get back and that will be?
Yeah, we, I adjourned into it.
Okay.
Yep. And we're taking them first.